I am calling the September 10th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Education to order per Government Code, Section 54950, executor at Education Code and Education Code, Section 35140, executor at 5:01 PM. We will now be adjourned to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters. Conference with Labor Negotiators, Dr. Alex Chernus, Superintendent Gary Stein, Assistant Superintendent of Admin Services, Dr. Isaac Gates, Deputy Superintendent of Human Resources, CSCA, APLE, and Plum. Is there anyone present who would like to address any of these items? Are you sure? Seeing none, we will now be adjourned to closed session at 5:02 PM. We are going to reconvene to open session at 6:00 PM. We have nothing to report out of closed session. Mrs. Buck, can you lead us in the pledge? Okay. Tonight, we have the honor of having Colonel Wayne Scott give us our inspirational message. If you can come to the podium, please, sir. And take however much time you need.
Thank you. I saw the number of blue cards coming up, so I'll be brief. Good evening, President Blades, members of the School Board and members of the Administration. I am retired Air Force Colonel Wayne Scott, a resident of Yorba Linda since retiring from the Air Force in 2005, and I have two grandchildren who are students at Van Buren Elementary School here in the district. It was my honor to serve this great nation in uniform for over 29 years. I am also honored to serve as President of the Yorba Linda Veterans Memorial Association, and I would like to begin by inviting members of the Board and the Administration to attend our annual Veterans Day ceremony at our memorial on Valley View Avenue in Yorba Linda on Monday, November 11th at 2:00 PM. I believe you will find our ceremony both inspirational and moving. When I was growing up in LA County, my frequent would occasionally share their memories of when they first heard about the surprise attack on Pearl Harbor in December of 1941. While I understood it as a historical event, I could never quite grasp the emotion of it until September 11th, 2001, 23 years ago tomorrow. I was on active duty, serving at Headquarters Air Combat Command in Hampton, Virginia, and watched the attacks live on television that morning. I also had a role in planning and executing our military's response to those attacks. On the 10th anniversary of 9/11, I gave a presentation at the Richard Nixon Presidential Library titled "The Military Response to the 9/11 Attacks" to about 300 guests, including several classes of 6th grade students. I took questions after my presentation, and one 6th grade student asked me, "Was it really that big a deal?" Several of the adults present started to get angry at her question, but I realized she was simply expressing the same thought I had when my parents talked about their Pearl Harbor memories. "I wasn't there. I don't fully grasp it. Please help me understand." So I tried to do that by explaining my own lack of understanding about Pearl Harbor until I had experienced something similar on 9/11. This remains a task before all of us as we approach the 23rd anniversary of those horrendous attacks. While there was a resurgence of patriotism immediately after those attacks, our nation has once again slipped into the complacency of feeling safe and secure here at home, not worried about those seemingly far-off forces that still seek our defeat and destruction. In 1975, I took an oath to defend and to support and defend our nation and our Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. My 29 years in uniform instilled in me a love of the freedoms we enjoy in this great country, and I remain willing to defend them today. Which brings me to, freedom isn't free. I lost good friends during my Air Force career. I've had the solemn duty of presenting a folded American flag to a grieving mother. That is when one really realizes the high cost of our freedoms. President Ronald Reagan said it best, and I quote, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it on to our children in the bloodstream. The only way they can inherit the freedom we have known is if we fight for it, protect it, defend it, and then hand it to them with the well-fought lessons of how they, in their lifetime, must do the same." My hope is that this school district will partner with parents to instill a sense of patriotism and love of country in our students so they are ready to defend our nation and our freedoms when it is their turn. To do my part, I am available to share my 9/11 presentation with any school or classroom in this district who wants to understand what happened to our nation on September 11th, 2001, in the aftermath of those attacks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we proceed with the remainder of our board meeting tonight, we would like to take a moment to honor the memory of the thousands of Americans who lost their lives in the tragic events of September 11th, 2001. It is hard to believe that over two decades have passed since the devastating day in our nation's history. To ensure we never forget, each year on September 11th, Patriots' Day, PYLUSD flies flags at half-staff across all facilities, and schools hold special commemorative activities. This year, schools once again encourage students to wear red, white, and blue, adorn campuses with patriotic decorations, observe moments of silence, held flag ceremonies, and shared the historical significance of the day through announcements and videos. At this time, please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of those who are lost. Thank you all. All right. Let the record show that all board members, including our student board member, is present. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for September 10th, 2024, Board of Education, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Youngblood. I have a second by Mr. Buck. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries 5-0 with an aye from our student board member. I'll now go into our public comment announcement. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. You'll be provided a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know if we know ahead of time. We can ensure we are prepared. We have a civility policy. Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. I need a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 13th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Frazier. I have a second by Mrs. Anderson. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 with an aye from our student board member. Right now, we'll be holding a public hearing, which will be held relative to certification of assurance for the fiscal year of 2024 to 2025 regarding the availability of student textbooks and instructional materials. I'm going to declare the public hearing open at 6:08 PM. Is there any speakers on this item? Seeing that there's none, I'm going to close it at 6:08 PM. And now I'm going to turn it over to our student board member to give his board report. Go ahead, Luke.
Good evening, President Blades, trustees, Deputy Student Intendant, Dr. Gates, and Executive Cabinet members. I'm excited to be here tonight to share recent updates from our comprehensive high schools and alternative campuses. Parkview has welcomed over 100 new students this school year, with a large majority attending the Universal Sports Institute, and enrollment continues to grow every single day. Buena Vista and Parkview are also excited to announce the formation of their PTAs, now named the Buena Vista Virtual Academy and Parkview School PTA. El Camino Real had a successful first week, welcoming over 125 new and returning students to campus. Students wrote appreciation cards to adults who have made a positive impact on their lives. Donuts were delivered to students during their edg reports, and teachers and staff engaged in various activities to get to know their students. In addition, this is El Camino's first year as an avid school. Over 60% of their staff attended the Avid Summer Institute and are excited to begin implementing the Avid Action Plan. They look forward to a great year of continuing old traditions and starting new ones. At El Dorado High School, the goal every year is set the tone by reminding the Golden Hawk community that spirit never sleeps at El Dorado. From the class of 2025 Senior Sunset, the school-wide photo on the first day of school, the aloha assembly and aloha dance, to Wednesday morning trivia for donuts and ASP signature overalls, this school year is already shaping up for one to remember. Esperanza had an amazing first two weeks of school. They hit the ground running with a pep rally, multiple football games with some wins, a dance, and even back to school night. Esperanza Girls' Flag Football took home the banner for the Gold Division at the Chargers' Second Annual Girls' Flag Invitational Tournament presented by Oakley, and the Aztecs are gearing up for their homecoming rally, football game, and dance happening on September 27th and 28th. Students are also establishing their clubs and preparing to promote them at Club Rush. George Key is excited to be hosting a Patriot Day ceremony on September 11th. The program will include a moment of silence, speeches by students from each of the Venture classes, and a special speech by Brooklyn Nettie on our speech device. Preschooler Evan will lead this pledge of allegiance. The Placentia Police Department has been invited to attend, and we are excited to see our community friends. Venture Academy is also excited to offer its coffee cart services at the end of this month. Students are busy working on advertising, selecting a logo, and learning their various coffee tasks. Coffee and cold water with a variety of flavors will be the two options. A soft opening for key Venture staff is scheduled for next week. Valencia is celebrating the AP results from exams taken in May 2024. A total of 308 more AP exams were administered in 2024, bringing the total to 1,854 exams compared to 2023. Their pass rate for 2024 was 89.32%, with 18 subjects scoring a 90% pass rate or better. Special recognition goes to the AP US History Class, which increased its pass rate by 27%, achieving a cumulative pass rate of 95% with 183 test takers. Their special program continues to grow, with 709 students enrolled in Valtech, 345 in Avid, 168 in IB, and 133 in Cambridge for the 2024-2025 school year. The Den, Valencia's student section, trended on high school TikTok with over 1.3 million views of their student section transition video, which compared the section before and during a football game. This earned them the title of Student Section Challenge Winner of the Week by the Orange County Student Section. Yorba Linda High School was off to an amazing start. Their week of welcome kicked off with a school-wide rock-paper-scissors competition, where students competed during third period and joined in a fun lunchtime finale. The campus was decorated with Mustang pride and spirit, and the week concluded with their exciting annual roaming rally. Last weekend, the YLHS Band and Guard had an unforgettable experience performing alongside the world-famous USC Trojan Band. The Mustangs joined other high school groups from Southern California for an incredible halftime show at the Los Angeles Coliseum. Mustang Fall sports are off to a fantastic start, and they are looking forward to an incredible season from all their teams. A big thank you goes out to hard-working coaches and staff who supported our student athletes. And that concludes my student board report.
And that was excellent.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you.
Of course.
How has El Dorado High School and the Placentia-Yorba Linda Unified School District prepared you for your life beyond high school?
So I think El Dorado and PYUSD have really helped build such a great community throughout schools and the district that the connections that I've made with my fellow students and coaches and teachers have, are built connections, right, that are going to last me throughout my entire life. So that's going to prepare me for past my just four years of high school. They're going to help me throughout college, throughout my adult life, and I'm going to be able to rely on these connections with former friends, former teachers, to help me learn and grow just past these four years of high school.
Thank you so much, Luke. It's a pleasure having you as a student board member.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to turn over to Dr. Gates for the Deputy Superintendent's Report. Take it away, Dr. Gates.
Good evening again, President Blades, trustees, and Executive Cabinet members. I am pleased to present the superintendent, excuse me, I am presenting the superintendent's report on behalf of Dr. Alex Chernus tonight. I'm Board of Education. I am pleased to report that for the first time in well over six years, our district is now increasing in enrollment. This is a huge accomplishment and directly attributable to our proactive measures, including building of new preschools, developing new innovative programs like OCS/CS, and USI, and continuing to be on the cutting edge of public education. As a result, families want to come here at a time when over 75% of districts across California are in decline. We have turned a corner. We are also thrilled to welcome back our staff, students, and families on Tuesday, August 27th, as we launch the 2024-2025 school year. On the first day of school, district leaders visited all 34 schools, witnessing the excitement of smiling students, the dedication of hard-working employees, and the enthusiasm of eager families. Our campuses were clean, inviting, and ready to serve our community. Even more impressive, teachers were teaching, and learning was already in full swing from day one, like in Mrs. Megan Scott's classroom, a math teacher at Yorba Linda High School who was already reviewing exponents in her class. We are deeply grateful to our employees for their meticulous preparation and for warmly welcoming each student with care and kindness. We are excited to see what happens this school year and what the year has ahead for us. So I have a superintendent's advisory update. Superintendent Dr. Alex Chernus will host three community advisory committees for the purposes, for the purpose of discussing district plans and to allow parents and guardians the opportunity to provide us with valuable feedback. The committees will be broken down into three groups: elementary school, middle school, high school, and special education. Parents and guardians, if you're interested in applying for a committee, we have extended the application period until September 20th. We are grateful for our community, our community's willingness to engage with our district and partner with us to support our children's education. Now, I would like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, Renee Gray, who will be sharing more about an exciting new program.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. Good evening, President Blades, Executive Cabinet, and the rest of the Board of Education. I am pleased this evening to present to you our new program entitled "Support One Student", better known as SOS. This program is designed to provide personalized assistance to students in our district in need of additional support. Many of our district leaders will serve as mentors in this program, stepping in to offer guidance and support to the students most in need at each school site. "Support One Student" will create a lasting positive impact on students while providing a meaningful experience for our PYLUSD leadership. We believe it will promote collaboration as we unite to take a significant step forward supporting students who face various challenges on their path to success in PYL. Making a difference in the lives of many students begins with adults volunteering to just mentor one student. Each mentor participating in the SOS program will work to build a meaningful connection with their mentees, fostering positive relationships. This dedicated support will provide our students who need it most with the additional care required to excel academically, socially, and personally. Our collective impact can be profound. In fact, the starfish story, although it may seem a little cliché, comes to mind, reminding us that even small efforts can make a significant difference, and it is our responsibility to support every student every day. The SOS Mentorship Program is designed to nurture both academic excellence and personal growth in students who are facing challenges. By pairing these students with dedicated mentors from the school district's Executive Cabinet and various divisions, the program provides personalized support and guidance. These mentors from the district office bring diverse experiences and perspectives. They will offer students not only academic assistance, but also emotional encouragement and real-world advice. Through these meaningful connections, the SOS Mentorship Program aims to empower students to overcome obstacles and achieve their full potential, fostering a stronger, more resilient school community. This initiative is entirely voluntary, with mentors stepping forward out of a genuine commitment to making a difference in students' lives. These mentors are not just providing guidance. They are serving as inspiring role models who lead by example. They demonstrate the values of dedication, perseverance, and compassion. By volunteering their time and expertise, they are helping to shape the futures of the students they mentor, offering them the support and encouragement needed to navigate challenges and achieve their goals. This program highlights the power of community involvement and the profound impact that a caring adult can have on a young person's life. The influence of a mentorship program on students is transformative. A mentor's guidance can dramatically shape a student's academic success and personal development. By providing unwavering support, mentors empower students to recognize their full potential, helping them to approach their educational journey with heightened confidence, resilience, and a clearer sense of purpose. This relationship can be a critical factor in not only shaping a student's future, but also fostering long-lasting positive outcomes impacting a student's confidence and resilience. Research from the American Psychological Association shows that the mentee benefits include increased self-esteem, resilience, and school engagement. And research from the mentor organization indicates that there is an experience of personal growth, increased job satisfaction, and stronger community ties that mentors experience when engaged in a student mentoring program. The following are benefits that mentees have shown in mentor-mentee programs that contribute to their overall development. Academically, they are likely to see improvements in their grades and higher test scores as a result of targeted support. Emotionally, they will gain increased self-confidence and resilience through the consistent encouragement and guidance of their mentors. And behaviorally, the program aims to reduce disciplinary incidences and absenteeism, fostering a more positive school experience. Additionally, mentees will develop stronger social skills, enhancing their communication and interpersonal relationships, which are crucial for personal and academic success. The following are benefits that are experienced from mentors when involved in a mentor-mentee relationship. First, there is a feeling of professional growth, where leadership and communication skills are enhanced. Second, mentors experience personal fulfillment through a feeling of satisfaction from making a positive impact on a student's life. Truly, district leaders would greatly value the opportunity, I can say so personally, to reconnect with students, as our roles at the district level often distance ourselves from direct student interactions. Re-engaging with students provides a meaningful reminder of the impact our work can have on students and fosters a deeper understanding of our students' needs at the site level. Lastly, there is a community connection that is experienced where stronger ties with the school and broader community occur. The overarching goal of our district-level SOS program is that over time, we witness student personal development by building their self-confidence and self-esteem through positive, caring role models. We will aim to equip students with the skills to set and achieve personal goals while providing advocacy and support to address barriers to their success. The program also focuses on offering emotional support and encouragement, fostering positive relationships, and assisting with academic needs. The proposed impact of our mentoring program will be truly transformative. Students will experience a remarkable boost in academic performance coupled with increased attendance and engagement in school activities. Their social and emotional well-being will be significantly enhanced, setting the stage for long-term success and higher graduation rates. However, this program is not just about immediate gains. It is more about the belief and the investments we make today that will shape and positively impact the lives of our students in the future. These dedicated efforts are meant to lay the foundation for their future growth and success. As Jane Goodall states, "Every individual matters. Every individual has a role to play, and every individual makes a difference." So moving forward, let's be the difference. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
I have a handful of questions. I love the mentee-mentor philosophy. I had a mentee for a handful of years going as one of our students went through high school, and it was phenomenal, and I still keep in touch with him. So what is the time commitment and number of times that the mentees, mentors will be getting together during the year?
So we will have a large group meeting probably in here to introduce everybody and have a getting-to-know-you activity and probably have food to eat and so forth. And then after that, we're asking that people make a once-a-week commitment. It could be a note that's sent in the mail. People like to, you know, have a written note, actually. It could be that they go visit the school site. It could be communication through their instructor or through their, you know, through the principal, but at least some sort of connection once a week.
And how many potential mentors are you anticipating?
So we already have, as of this morning, 36. I'm hoping for more. So we at least have one for every school site, which, to me, is not enough. We're hoping to get more, but it's on a totally voluntary basis. So as we, and some people have even asked for choices about, you know, maybe age level or if they would like maybe a student with special needs or so forth. So we're starting to pair them up now. And I think I've been involved in these programs, too. It tends to grow. Once, once people get involved, you'll have more people kind of join the movement, if you will.
How many students, or how will the students be selected?
Be identified, yeah. So the identification process is going to be probably threefold. We're going to be looking at difficulties with like absenteeism and maybe chronic absenteeism. We're going to be looking at behavior, and it'll be identified through, a lot of times, we have support meetings at the school site where students are identified, and we're always looking for additional resources. So this could be an additional source of help for the student. And then there may be a referral, for example, let's say a counselor or a wellness specialist or somebody says, hey, this student is in need of additional support. So it'll be that way, too, but we're looking at attendance, behavior, and really how they're doing in their coursework.
Well, I'm very interested. I, just one last question. I know that maybe we may have community members, former employees, that might be interested in as well. It's easy to say for us, we vetted all of our staff here. They've been background-checked, all of those kind of things.
Yeah.
As this grows and as you potentially get more involvement or need for it, just something to consider on ways that we can, we can tackle that, make sure the kids are safe, but also have some, some extra mentees or mentors. So great. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I was going to ask about the community getting involved as well. Is there a way that we can get a copy of these slides?
Yes.
And, you know, some of the additional information, you know, about the time and the students and how we identify them?
Yes, absolutely.
That we was discussed here tonight.
Absolutely. I can get that to you.
The majority of the mentors, are they teachers, staff, what are, other administrators and so forth?
Yep. The majority of the mentors are Executive Cabinet. That's not the majority. There's only a few of us. But, yeah, we have this large, we have 34 of us up here, 36. No, we have a lot of directors that have volunteered, assistant directors, administrators, program specialists, coordinators. Yeah, we're trying to get our district leaders up here to be, to help with this, mostly.
Thank you.
All my questions were answered. I mean, this is, this is a great opportunity. Obviously, would like to see it grow, for sure, but I think making sure that we have the right people involved and dealing with students from outsiders is a little bit sticky. So let's make sure we do that right, but I would love to help as many kids as we possibly can, because this could be great. Is there any, I mean, I know that there's going to be students that are maybe selected for it. Are there any opportunities for students to apply for it?
You know what? I was looking at that today, and I was actually thinking, I wonder if someone will ask me that, because I was thinking that, that is there a self-referral process? Which I think, to me personally, I think there should be that element, but there's that in counseling, too. So we have a whole counseling department, and sometimes when students need help, they self-refer. And so that might be the process as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's absolutely a possibility.
Because that would be, I mean, even identifying like, ooh, I'm interested in doing what you do, or... Even identifying like, ooh, I'm, I'm interested in, in doing what you do or, or learning about that, that might be interesting to look into, too.
I can't think of a question, I just love this. I absolutely love this, so I'm very excited for this.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Gates. I think we did, we got one more. All right, so this leaves us in a public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the board, during the public comment, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have 18 people wishing to speak tonight, which that will give us one and a half minutes each. I'm going to call four people up at a time, and I may have you sit in the front row, and I'm going to ask that when you come up, you repeat your name at the microphone, so we can all be able to get your name and write it down. Our first speakers are Ed Gunn, Billy Smith, Priscilla Palacios, and Leslie Alexander.
Madam President, I'd just like to make a point of order. According to our board policy, 9322.2, public comment clearly states that it cannot be political speech, which I would assume would be science as well. Number five reads that public comments cannot be for the purpose of urging the support or defeat of any ballot measure or candidate, including, but not limited to, any candidate for election for the governing board of the education.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does Lee Andrew for Supreme Court?
I'm running for Supreme Court, I don't even qualify, so go ahead.
Excellent. Hello, Ed Gunderson's my name, 47-year resident of Yobalinda. I'll start off with, "Teachers good, union bad, so-so bad. Go check out the Apple website, three candidates are backed by the union there. These are the three that you do not want to vote for. When a union pays for the election of a candidate, do they represent..." Do they represent parents?
This needs to be stopped.
"...and the taxpayer or the union? Who will stop these candidates from the union and the union from stomping out the guts of this poor taxpayer? I'm hearing that Misty Jensen..."
Madam President, please follow our bylaws.
Can we keep the candidates' names out of it, please? You know what? Can I have quiet back there? Thank you. Who said that? Why don't you go ahead and step out? No, I don't, she's interrupting a public meeting.
Officer?
Officer, can you squirt her out? Can you refrain from using candidates' names?
Yes, I apologize.
Thank you.
Jeremy, can you put 30, a minute back on the clock, please? I, I did hear that there's a candidate in District 3 that refuses to debate in the East Lake Forum. I, I did not say her name.
Madam President, this is against Education Code 7054.
It is.
This needs to be stopped.
Anyway, why do you ask that she would be afraid to go to that debate? Well, she can't defend her love of critical race theory. She cannot defend her love of boys and girls' restrooms and sports.
This is not allowed.
She cannot defend her love for pornographic material in our libraries. She also hates parental notification, and she wants to drive a wedge between you and your children, so that they can be indoctrinated. There's also a terrible leftist running in District 2.
Okay.
As well as District 1.
That's enough, that's enough.
That's it?
Yeah, that's enough.
All right. Thank you. Oh, hey, by the way, don't forget, don't forget, I still had a minute.
Sir. Billy Smith.
Don't forget.
Billy Dunn.
Can we have him escorted out, please? Can you escort him out, too, please? So, if she's still inside, then I have to allow him inside, so they either both go or none. Okay, well, then I need both of you to go outside to get the law. Billy Smith.
Billy Smith. I direct this to the board, board's majority. It's deeply disheartening to see that in this very room educators are being branded as pedophiles, groomers, pornographers, abortionists, Marxists. This isn't just unprofessional, it's an outright disgrace. Such vile accusations thrown around in meetings in the community and on social media are not only baseless, but deeply damaging to our educational system and the very individuals that dedicate to shaping our children's futures. The consequences of your actions are clear. Teachers are suffering under hostile work environment caused by your disgraceful behavior. It also is worth noting that part of your responsibilities includes negotiating with the teachers' union. Demonizing educators is not a constructive way to foster a positive relationship. Historically, this district has prided itself on cooperative relationships between the board and the union, which you would know if you had been here in our educational community for more than 20 minutes. Instead of fueling this toxic atmosphere, I urge you to redirect your focus where it belongs, on the education and well-being of our students. The energy spent tearing down teachers would be far better invested in fostering an environment where education thrives and our children are supported. Your behavior is not only unprofessional...
Thank you.
Do better.
Thank you. Priscilla Palacios.
Priscilla Palacios. With the opening of OCSES and now USI, more has been done in the last year to undermine the arts and the dual-language program. From the displacement of the students to accommodate USI from NPR, to forcing dual-language students to choose between continuing orchestra that they had three years for in Glenview or remaining in the dual-language program. When I expressed my shock and frustration regarding the latter to Dr. Fisher, she simply said that I should perhaps consider whether OCSES was, quote, "the right fit," end quote, for my family and I. What would make her think that such a statement was even remotely appropriate or acceptable? One need look no further than to her mentors and superiors that have used that very verbiage to involuntarily transfer amazing educators and to justify the loss of those who couldn't remain in such a hostile work environment. PYL teachers deserve much more than receiving their pins for decades of service, 15 here, in an unceremonious fashion, and the students deserve so much more, who are the very reason we, as educators, choose to stay and show up every single day for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Alexander. And then next, we will have Jenny Bremer, Linda Cohn, Karen Alexic, and Linda Mannion.
My name is Leslie Alexander. I am a newly-retired teacher and homeowner in Area 1. I would like to speak about the atmosphere of distrust that permeates throughout this entire school district. This erosion of trust is largely due to this administration's campaign of intimidation, fear, and retaliation, targeting teachers and staff at schools all across our district. It is an effort to silence teachers and staff from speaking out about the chaos that is commonplace with Dr. Churness in charge. I experienced this toxic work environment firsthand. It has a chilling effect on morale, it's demotivating, causes undue stress and anxiety, and leaves employees fearful to speak out. It is a clear deviation from the core values of this school district. The responsibility for this oppressive work environment falls squarely to the three majority board members, Mrs. Blades, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Youngblood. They are responsible for hiring Dr. Churness, yet these three board members have refused to provide any kind of oversight or accountability for Dr. Churness, not even a yearly performance review. Isn't that a deliberate failure by these three board members to perform the very basic duties of their job? I believe this deliberate failure should disqualify all three of these members from a seat on this board. It is time for change. Our students, teachers, and staff deserve so much better than this.
There was Jenny Bremer, Linda Cohn, Karen Alexic, and Linda Mannion.
Sorry, I didn't hear you the first time back there. I'm Jenny Bremer, teacher at Eldorado. I'm here to address, once again, the issue of having Narcan at all of our schools. I've come several times and spoke to the board, I've sent some emails, I've gotten some responses, which I appreciate, and talked about that. We did have a little blurb and one little training once after school at Eldorado, and there was a handful of teachers. All of them already had Narcan, I know because I gave it to them. We're not done. You're not done. We don't have Narcan in all of our classrooms. We need to have these today, yesterday. I can't emphasize enough how horrible it would be for me to come here and say, "Now kid's dead, now what have you done?" It is essential we have this. It costs you nothing, it's a 12-minute video to watch, it's so easy. We have fire extinguishers in every one of our classrooms, why don't we have these? We need to stop all this division, the time it's taking to cut people down in the community online, and all this crap that's going on, and focus on, number one, is the safety of our kids. That's number one. This is not a big ask, this is not even hard. Please, put the political will and the effort into getting Narcan in every classroom. I'm going to send an email, I gave some suggestions last time, I'm going to send one again this week. Please read it.
Following up on what Dr. Gates said, I, I want to make a bold claim. If you want to test the health of a district, I would submit to you that the number-one test, certainly one of the top tests, is growing enrollment, which is exactly what we have right now. And that's what I say when I talk to parents and community members. I tell them about the new preschools, I tell them about the School of Computer Science, when I talk about a skill that kids can go right out into the community and use, they are very excited about this, very positive about that school. I talk about the Universal Sports Institute, all of these creative programs that are drawing in students. By the way, thank you, Luke, for mentioning that, great report. All of this, all of this is innovation, and all of this is proof that something has to be going right for this district if our enrollment is growing, because students and parents do not flock to failing districts. I also want to talk about the students that are already here, the high-quality tutoring programs. When summer school was reinstated in 23, we had 4,000 students tutored in math. I, I want to hear more about the 24 program, too, which I understand was even larger. The special ed diplomath is huge, and not only that, employing these special ed kids, and that, and we just heard about a brand-new program. Thank you, thank you, Renee Gray, for all of this wonderful thing. We have multi-year raises for our teachers, financial stability...
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Karen Alexic.
Hi, my name's Karen Alexic, I'm going to keep this short, but sweet. I just wanted to give a shout-out to our school, Brookhaven. We just received notice. It's with great pride that Brookhaven can officially announce that we have earned PBIS Gold status. I know our principal, Laura Fisher, has been working very hard with our PBIS team, everyone from our noon supervisors to our custodian, to our amazing secretaries, to our teachers, we've all been working hard, and Laura has been the leader of all that to make sure we have a consistent form of informing parents of behaviors and the process that we go through as those behaviors may escalate, or what we do to prevent them from escalating. So, it's been a nice journey, I think it's our third year of applying, so we went from, I think, bronze to silver, and now we're at gold, so we're very proud of that.
Thank you. Linda Mannion. And then next will be Dee Lawrence Radler, Julie Klinkenberg, Julie Sicard, and Sam Maevich.
Linda Mannion, Apple President. General Douglas MacArthur said, "A true leader does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the quality of his actions and the integrity of his character." As we approach November, I'd like to talk about partisan politics and school board elections. Until the last few elections, school board candidates in our district have always been listed as nonpartisan. This is important, because a school district is a unique institution that should not have loyalty to any one party or any political party's platforms. Instead, school boards should have only one loyalty, and that is to support the classroom work that allows for students to be successful and ultimately chase their dreams. Parents and students want the very best education for their students, and they want decisions based on what is best for the district and their students. Therefore, as we approach our school board election, look at candidates and determine what is best for all. We have all recently seen that elections matter, but when it comes to our schools...
Linda, can you stop with the political politics, please? Marilyn Anderson has just pointed it out to me.
We have all recently seen that elections matter. Let's choose leaders who lead our district with integrity, wisdom, and most of all, truth.
Thank you.
Maybe we get clarification for, from our attorneys for next time, just so we're more boundaries.
Yeah, we can't encourage the voting, we can't talk about the election, so if anybody's going to come up here and talk about the election coming up or any type of politics, then we need to stop. Thank you. Dee Lawrence Radler.
Laws are rules that bind people living in a community to protect their safety and ensure their rights as citizens against abuses by other people, organizations, and the government itself. The majority of this board has repeatedly flouted many of these rules and norms because they found them inconvenient or personally distasteful. This nonsense must come to an end. Just to name a few examples, whether it is construction statutes, DSA, environmental regulations, AQMD, parliamentary procedure allowing non-members to make parliamentary motions, district bylaws not conducting mandated reviews of the superintendent, unlawfully removing members of a public meeting in violation of Government Code Section 54947.95, or last month's apparent multiple Brown Act violations, Trustee Youngblood's failure to remain at the noticed teleconference location, among other apparent violations. This pattern is getting old. The public schools should not have been, this public should not have been forced to wait more than 20 minutes during last month's meeting in a desperate attempt by the board president and superintendent to secure a necessary vote, knowing full well that Trustee Youngblood's participation was likely unlawful. "I guess we stalled enough," quote-unquote, is an unacceptable comment from the board president, when we all have better things to do with our valuable time. Enough is enough. I am accordingly hereby serving this board, this body, with a cure and correct demand, a copy of which will be forwarded to council for the district.
Julie Klinkenberg.
I wanted to go on record saying thank you to all of our amazing teachers and coaches across the district, so many happy students returning to school because of you, our heroes.
Should we make her remove her shirt or put something over her shirt, since it's political speech? Well, I'm just asking. Well, I'm not running for Supreme Court. If we're going to, if we're going to go this way...
Jeremy, can you put 120 back on the clock, please?
Thank you. That's what, it's on, that's what shows is the back.
Sorry, I came straight from, well, wait, do I get to start over, or?
120 is on the clock.
Teachers, you are not the evil force that some are trying to make you out to be. In spite of obstacles and distractions put in place by our current superintendent and board majority, you teachers continue to teach with a high caliber... board majority, you teachers continue to teach with a high caliber of meaningful, quality instruction, decorum, and professionalism, and most importantly, kind, welcoming, positive relationships with students and families. We trust you, the professional educators in the district, to focus on academics. You are the professionals. Let the teachers teach. We are confident that you teachers honor a student-centered approach, so we send our kids to public schools to learn facts, think critically, collaborate, foster creativity, hone communication skills, non-negotiables that all students deserve and need in order to be prepared for college, career, service trades, and to contribute positively to society. Speaking of trust, I wanted to make a public shout-out to trustees Anderson and Buck. I always enjoy your informative, action-packed reports. You two are everywhere. I see you in classrooms, at training, celebrations. You make every child feel valued. You embody what a trustee should be and do when you come to board meetings with your thoughtful questions and demands for budget oversight of my hard-earned taxpayer money. You do your best to ensure that all students are afforded access to the best opportunities, not just an elite for you. Thank you.
Julie Sicard.
Good evening. My name is Julie Souchard. On page 232 of the agenda, there are four checks totaling $110,888.02 payable to Production Access Group. I looked up the company, and they sell audiovisual and lighting equipment. I am curious, were these funds spent on equipment to record USI students? Because I know that one of the advisors of USI owns a media company. Speaking of USI, a check for $1,228,536.57 was issued to Training Lab on May 30, 2024. According to the state of California's website, the Training Lab was not in good standing with the state until July 18, 2024. As of last week, the Training Lab still does not have a business license to operate in the city of Placentia. I have seen comments online that due to Training Lab's previous issues, they are unable to obtain general liability and workman's compensation insurance for their work on PYLUSD campuses. Can the board clarify if this is true or not? I know that the schools have insurance, but does Training Lab have insurance that allows their staff to be on PYLUSD campuses? Thank you for any clarification that you can provide.
After Sam Maiovich is going to be Dave Peterson, Nellie Raphael, Kim Flint, and Karen.
My name is Sam Maiovich, and I'm a taxpayer. Certain individuals in our community are screaming and trying their hardest to have you believe that there were financial improprieties in the past, when in fact, these are the same very people that need to be looked at for what's going on currently in the district. Millions of dollars are being spent to bring a charter school and poorly-conceived sports academy to the district that actually serve very few students. Don't take your eye off the ball of what is currently happening with them trying to make a mountain out of a molehill from a very necessary bond measures that took place 16 and 22 years ago. The cab bond these individuals are referring to is being taken out of context. The bond allowed for $13 million in almost 0% federal matching funds, along with free money from a matching state bond to modernized schools around the state. Nothing that prior boards took action on has put the district in any bankruptcy or financial risk situation. The two bond measures passed are repaid by the homeowners in the PYLUSD area, not the district. These individuals are basing their information on a poorly-written article published in the Orange County Register several years ago. The article was one-sided, anti-bond, and the journalist failed to even speak to a representative from the district before publishing. Get the facts straight. Stop spreading misinformation and lies to create fear in the voting population.
Thank you. Dave?
All right. Sorry I had to miss last meeting. I was on vacation. Hope you guys had a good vacation, too. Dave Peterson, 46-year resident, Yorba Linda pastor, retired special ed teacher, and coming to you with a little update from my perspective, 116. First of all, I want to give props to the special ed department. With the tea that they had, I believe it was this last week, the Welcome Back Tea was able to drop in for a little bit. As a special ed teacher, it means a lot to me. This place was packed, and the parents were present and engaged with what was being shared by the leadership. I hope that that can be a platform for future growth, developing small cores within the parent groups, and kind of capitalizing on all the parents that weren't able to come, you know, on that morning, so that they could be a part of this, you know, momentum that's going with special ed. So heads up and props for that. Second item is you've got a lot of new teachers coming in, and I don't know if today's report is the only one, but you've got 39 new teachers. You have five years to basically wed them into the teaching profession. If they don't get the thing going in five years, they will not only leave your district, but teaching. So that's your cue to retain them by putting the time in on that first five years, especially the first two years, as they need to learn how to get the classroom management thing going. And that's it.
Thank you, Dave. Nellie Raphael, Kim Flint, and Karen.
If the APLE union represent the teachers, then who is advocating for the parents? The board members serve as the voice for the parents, and it is essential for parents to raise their voice at board meetings with friends and among neighbors to ensure that the truth spreads quickly, countering any false information promoted by a small group of disgruntled supporters and candidates themselves. Some board members prioritize the interests of the union, while our board majority is dedicated to fighting for the rights of parents and their children. You may have noticed the signs, "Save Our Schools" signs throughout town funded by the APLE. Save our schools from what exactly? Increased enrollments? Recent teacher salary increases? New innovative programs? Preparing students for successful futures? Parents must carefully research who they want seated on the dais coming, as these individuals will make decisions that directly impact their children's education. It is important to challenge them and claim to be nonpartisan and show bias in the past. Evidence of verbal and written...
All right, that's enough. No more political speech. Thank you. The "save our schools" is not political.
Can I start?
Okay, yes.
My name is Kim. I'm one of the new families in the district. I just came here. I left a very chaotic and imploding district to come here. I like the change that's going on. Although I've lived here for 20 years, like I said, I'm a new family to the district. I have a son at one of the high schools here in Placentia, Yorba Linda. Being new to the district, I was pretty sure that I knew what I was coming into, but I felt that it was fair that I come in with an open mind. I really wanted to see things from both sides of the fence. I thought to myself, what better way than to get some insight than if I signed into some local moms groups on local media, social media platforms? So that's what I did. I joined some local Facebook groups shortly after being accepted into these groups. I couldn't believe what was going on in the community. I was disgusted at the attacking that was going on. At first, I thought to myself that maybe I just had joined at an odd time, but then I thought that grown women couldn't be acting like this. But I just sat back for a while, like the new kid in class, trying to absorb it all in and see what was going on. Both these groups claim to be nonpartisan and biased, but what does that mean? I mean, they're just local moms trying to keep each other informed, tell each other what's going on in the community, so what does it matter? Well, that's where my point comes, is that after finally getting the courage to speak up and offer some advice, some of the members in the group were verbally attacking the character of a dad in the district. Let me make it known that I don't know this dad. I've never met this dad. The dad would not know me if I walked by him on the street. But I simply suggested, maybe you guys address him, ask him, open dialogue. I was attacked, deleted, and removed.
Karen, and then next will be Brent and Maria.
Hi. Rather than try to address each of the outlandish lies and chaos being spread throughout the district, I'm going to ask everyone to look at it from a different perspective. When did all of this chaos begin? The answer explains everything. It started just before election season. Aided by a brand-new Facebook propaganda page full of fake anonymous profiles, as well as another formerly pleasant local Facebook group for moms, now completely shilling for a certain candidate who wishes to get in this dais here. Other than the fact that they've censored and kicked out most every rational person who tries to bring the truth against their lies, including me, I'll just point out that when you have to hide behind fake profiles in order to spread your lies, that makes it very clear. You're not willing to stand behind what you say because you know it isn't true, and it's not because you're in fear of retaliation. Have you had your tires slashed or your car keyed because it was displaying a campaign magnet for your candidate? Have you had your place of work called in an effort to defame you and get you fired? We have. But that's not something Leandra's opponents have to worry about, because they don't employ that kind of thuggery. We're just a bunch of parents trying to protect our kids from inappropriate political and sexual ideology meant to influence our children in ways that undermine the personal beliefs of so many families.
Thank you.
Okay.
Brent?
My name is Brent. I did K-12 in this district, so I just want to address something earlier, and I think we just didn't give credit where credit is due. Only three board members were given credit for hiring Churnus, and I just want to make sure trustees Anderson and Buck get credit for that also, because that was a 5 to 0 vote. So, thank you.
Maria?
Good evening, members of the board, staff, and community. There are three significant achievements our superintendent and board majority have made over a short period of time, which will have a long-lasting impact on our kids and generations to come. Number one is the parental notification policy. The policy, quote, "integrates parents, guardians into the decision-making process for mental health and social-emotional issues of their children arising at school at the earliest possible time in order to prevent or reduce potential instances of harm to self or others, as well as promote communication and positive relationships with parents, guardians, or peoples that promote positive educational outcomes for people's academic and social-emotional success," end quote. Yet trustee Anderson voted no on the parental notification policy, going back on her promise to support parental engagement. Number two is our board majority approved the Singapore Math Curriculum for the Orange County School of Superior Science, giving our kids access to the educational tools they need to succeed academically, such as dimensioned math textbooks. Again, trustee Anderson voted no on textbooks and curriculum. Three, Universal Sports Institute. In just six months, our superintendent and board majority and staff oversaw the creation of the state-of-the-art sports training and recovery facility that our kids deserve. Yet, again, trustee Anderson voted no on the USO, and I quote, "I don't want anything to do with it. I will not vote to spend $1 on this project." Constituents in Area 2 remember trustee Anderson's voting record. Thank you.
I don't think so. All right. Can I have a motion for 16.1, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the June 30, 2024, fund balances and unedited actuals as reflected in the Saks Financial Report.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mr. Youngblood. Mr. Stein, take it away.
Before you start, our...
I can stay. I got a little bit... I got a lot of homework.
He was asking if he could. I wasn't going to call out of time.
Thank you so much.
I really think you just want to hit Taco Tuesday, but I'll keep that to myself.
I just started. No, just kidding. Yeah.
You're probably leaving at a great time. Even though he promised that this would be an exciting budget presentation.
I promised it wouldn't be 30 minutes, but please. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you. Good evening, President Blades, Board of Trustees, Executive Cabinet, and staff and members of the community. I'm happy to be able to provide this presentation to you. We were going to review our unaudited actuals for fiscal year 2023-24. This presentation represents our unaudited actual data as of June 30, '24, which is our completion of our prior year. So this is the agenda for this evening, and I will get through it as quickly as I can. First, we're going to provide a review of the report of our unaudited actual financial information. We will review the '24-'25 adopted budget, which has no changes, which is why this will be a little faster. And then we'll also cover our LCFF projections, the district's multi-year projections, and then we'll talk about what's coming up in the next couple of months. So in your packet is a complete unaudited actuals report for fiscal year 2023-24. Staff has prepared the report in compliance with Education Code 42100, which states that on or before September 15, the governing board of the district shall approve an annual statement of all receipts and expenditures for the preceding fiscal year. The final audited financial report will be for 2023-24. It will be presented to the board in January, once our external auditors have completed their work. So here's a look at the specific components of our ending fund balance, or ending general fund balance, I should say. At the time that staff presented the '23-'24 estimated actuals in June, we anticipated that the district would close with an ending fund balance of $69.2 million. As you'll see here, the district's unrestricted ending balance came in at $72.9 million, which represents an increase of $3.7 million from projections. The reason for this difference is twofold. One, according to GASB 31, which is a requirement that we realize, or not realize, report unrealized gains, and this is a number that we get from the county treasury. We have to put that in the report. It's $1.1 million, but it's not, just as it sounds, it's unrealized gain, meaning it's not a real number. We have to put it in based on interest earned at the treasury. So there's that, and then there was a lot, and I won't say a lot, but the other difference has to do with less spending than expected in certain programs and at sites, that that money, we expect that to be spent in '24-'25, so it rolls over into next year. But either way, the difference equates to less than 1% of our total expenditures for the fiscal year. So, still pretty good, pretty accurate. But you've got all the components of the ending fund balance listed on this slide. Next, we're going to go into and look at our local control funding formula and our multi-year projections. And this information you've seen before. So this, again, is just an overview of what our projections are for LCFF funding for the district, and it reflects the state's statutory COLA of 1.07% this year, 2.93% for '25-'26, and 3.08% for '26-'27. It also factors in a three-year rolling ADA average, which means that you either get the higher of this year or three years in average, which helps us out in the long term.
Mr. Stein, will you repeat those percentages again, please?
Yes. For '24-'25, it's 1.07%. '25-'26, it's 2.93%, and then '26-'27 is 3.08%. So as mentioned in previous presentations, all of our projections assume a 400-student decline per year in '24-'25, '25-'26, '26-'27, so 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,200 students over the three-year period. So I wanted to point that out, because we're going to talk about that in a minute. So as I move to the next slide, our multi-year projections, as you can see, while the district will finish '23-'24 with a surplus, we expect, or we, based on projections, to see a deficit beginning in '24-'25. Again, that is based on projections and based on assumptions that we have. What I want to say about these figures is that, at the moment, it appears that our enrollment is at a point where we don't look like we're going to lose 400 students. That has... And that is good news. It's fantastic. Last year, if you remember, we reported that ADA, we didn't lose 400 students. We lost like 280, which is fantastic. We don't lose as many. So we're going to, we're heading in the right direction. This may be the year where the district levels out, which is fantastic. And again, it's pretty unique in Orange County. The point in saying that, though, is those out years look very different when you stop declining enrollment. And so what you'll see come December, because we have to hit Seabeds Day, which is October 2, which is when our ADA is locked in. Once that happens, all of our budget gears go back into motion, and we try to adjust everything for our first interim, which will be presented to the board in December. So I want you to be prepared for that. The general fund is where most of our money is, right? We know that. We've talked about that before. But we do want to talk about all the other district funds that we have and present the estimated actuals, I'm sorry, the unaudited actuals, and then talk about our '24-'25 projections. On this slide, you've got all of the other funds outside of Fund I, which is our general fund. I wanted to highlight that we identified an issue with Fund 12, and so that's... I wanted to highlight that we identified an issue with Fund 12, and so that's why you have a revised budget that we've passed out to the board. We will also be posting the revised budget on, online tomorrow morning as well. It is, it affects the expenditures for Fund 12. So the numbers are highlighted, those are the correct numbers that are reflected in the report, and it will be posted online tomorrow, but I want you to have that because you're voting on it tonight. So what that effect is, is that obviously we have more expenditures and results in the lower ending fund balance for our child development fund. So this is where we're at as of '23, '24. And then this is what we're projecting for '24, '25. And obviously, with the ending fund balance in Fund 12 going down for '23, '24, it affects the beginning fund balance and therefore the ending fund balance for '24, '25. But in either case, it's still a healthy fund balance in that field. So with that, I promised it would be quick because we didn't change any of the assumptions for '24, '25, and the state didn't change the funding provided to us for '24, '25 so far. So we'll talk about next steps. We have first interim coming up in December. We have our LCAP update, which will include, in February, February '25, which will include our update on actions, our update on our goals, and our update on our metrics, which would be nice to hear. And then we will have second interim in March, and then we start the whole process again for '25, '26, rebuild an LCAP and a budget for the coming year. So that is what we need to expect. We talk about challenges ahead. This has changed a little bit because every year, we're here talking about declining enrollment. And this year, it's, as I mentioned, I think in June, that we're seeing something different in our trends, and so we need to watch it, where, but we're seeing something different, so we remove that from the challenges ahead for now. The attendance rates, I'll be honest, are still low. They're lower than our district average of 96-plus that we used to have prior to COVID. And so we still have room to grow there. We're doing better, but we have room to grow. And that also affects our bottom line severely as well. We still mean, have the same costs for step and column, pension costs, and obviously everybody knows that we've been hit with inflationary costs that are pretty extreme over the last number of years, and that affects everything that we buy here at the district. So everything's costing us more. And then last but not least, we do have a lot of one-time funding that expires. So at the end of this month, all of the federal money for ESER and the COVID funding expires at the end of this month, so we have to have all that spent. And those are our challenges. And with that, I just want to quickly give a shout out to the fiscal services team and our business services team, so especially Fong Tran and Christina Michelle for all of their work on this, and Pat Espinosa, and Terry, and everybody that's helped to get this together for us. So thank you very much. And with that, questions? Do you have any questions?
Hi, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
And I also like to thank the team for all their hard work. This is a lot of numbers to put together and different budgets, and to correlate it, it's, it's a lot of work to end our year end. On page 13 of the unaudited actuels, it lists Fund 6762, and it's the Arts, Music, and Instructional Block Grant. And it lists the total for the '23, '24 school year at basically 11 and a half million, and then it lists the budget for the '24, '25 school year at 7.1 million. Our total allocation for this grant is 14 million. So you see where I'm going?
Yes, I see where, I see where you're pointing at there.
So I'm just trying, this was a three-year plan that we approved last September for this.
Yeah. So there's, there's money being carried over from '23, '24 to '24, '25, which is why, if, so this is what we have listed in...
Yeah. It says that we spent, am I, it says we spent 11 million, right?
Well, it's all tied to that resource. I need to go, I need to verify that. I didn't bring those details with me, yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we did not spend 11 million last year on, out of that fund, because we had budgeted, what we approved was like 5.3 million, and it was basically three pots of 5...
That's a page of balances, though.
Yeah, it's a balance, so basically, it's what was in there in '23, '24.
It'd be 11 million balance.
Balance?
Yeah.
So that would be spent...
So the next one, yes.
Still would be four, three.
Okay.
Yeah. So basically, it's, it's how much is still left of that, of that grant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. That answers that. Yay. I won't stress out about that anymore. And then there's been a lot of questions about enrollment numbers, and when we talk about enrollment numbers for ADA, it's, it's kindergarten through 12. Is that correct?
We do get funding for TK as well.
Yeah, but it's not listed in here.
It's a separate, it's a separate amount that we get for TK, yes.
So, because it lists the enrollment for last year was 22,036 students, basically. So can I get the actual numbers for the TK last year, and then this year, the enrollment numbers for the K through 12, and then the TK, and then also the preschool?
Absolutely, yes.
And last year's and this year's?
Yes, we can do that for you.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
How much money do we get from our paid preschools? Do you know off, offhand?
I don't.
The ones that we've just opened?
I don't. I can, I can get that for you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification. These are unaudited actuels, which means there is an audited financial coming, which happens every year.
Which happens every year, and we get that in January, yeah.
Just wanted to put it on the record.
Okay.
Don't be too excited for December.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We will next go, can I have a motion for 16.2, please?
I'll make a motion to approve contract renewal for medical insurance with self-insured schools of California effective October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, I have a second by Mrs. Anderson. Mr. Stein, once again.
Okay, thank you very much. So this item is to approve the contract renewal with the self-insured schools of California, aka SISC, to provide medical benefits to our benefit-eligible employees, dependents, and retirees. The contract would be effective for the coming plan year of October 1st, 2024 through September 30, 2025. SISC is a joint powers authority, a JPA, which is administered by the current county superintendent of schools. It's the largest school benefit pool in the U.S. with over 400 educational agencies and over 300,000 members. The district participation in this plan for the past few years, along with the valiant work of our Health Benefits Committee, so if anybody's in there, in their room, thank you. But basically, the work that's comprised of our, both of our units and, and also district staff have really helped to lower the cost of our, of our, or keep the cost low for our medical plans. So the planned cost for '24, '25 will be increasing by 5.2% for our Anthem plans and 5.3 for Kaiser, which is well below national averages. So we should be proud of that, but we submit this to the board for approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Insurance cost in California especially is insane.
Yes, it's awful. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye, motion carries 5-0. Need a motion for 17.1, please?
I'll make a motion to approve item 17.1, Sunshine CSEH, chapter number 293, initial proposal for negotiations of the reopening or contract agreement for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson and a second by Mr. Youngblood. Dr. Gates?
Good evening again, President Blades, trustees, and executive cabinet. Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce the next two items on our agenda being brought forward for consideration. The district and the CSEH, chapter 293, has, have a bargaining, bargaining agreement through June 30, 2025. Per Article I of the contract, the parties agree to commence reopeners, reopen negotiations for the '24, '25 school year. The Educational Employment Relation Act requires initial contract proposals made by both sides to be presented at a public meeting prior to commencement of employer, employee negotiations. In accordance with these procedures, CSEH is submitting their initial proposal to open And then in accordance with the procedures, the district is also submitting their proposal to open negotiations as the, as the represented, as represented in the second action item brought to you before tonight.
Any comments?
No comments for me.
Can we have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries 5-0. I have a motion for 17.2, and I think he covered it, so we can probably just move to the vote.
Excellent. I'll make a motion to Sunshine, the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District, classified bargaining agreement for the contract ending June 30, 2025.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Youngblood, I have a second by Mrs. Anderson. Any comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries 5-0. This moves us into our consent calendar. Consent calendars are actions proposed for the consent calendar that are consistent in nature and approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote items. Is there any items tonight that need to be pulled?
I have two, 19.3 and 20.2.
19.3 and 20.2.
And I like to pull 19.2, 20.4, 20.18, and 22.1.
22.1?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion, or let me, can I have a motion to approve everything but the pulled items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I have a second by Mr. Youngblood. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I am an aye, motion carries 5-0. I'll take a motion for 19.2, please.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant listings in the following amounts. Check number 266415 through 266951. Current year expenditures, August 4, 2024 through August 31, 2024, of the amount of $18,131 and seven, oh, correction. 18 million, 131,071 and 79 cents, sorry. And payrolls register 1B, which is 4 million, 41,151 and 72 cents. 2A, which is 2,517,227 and 31 cents.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Youngblood, I have a second by Mrs. Buck.
Okay, I sent several warrants in my questions, and I don't know what happened, but they got lost. So, in, that I submitted to the board, yeah. And so I just, there's a lot of them, and I resent it to Dr. Gates before the meeting, and I guess we'll just highlight, because I have a lot of questions about these. One is warrant listing from 825 through 831. It is the 82, it's for the access to human potential. So we originally approved their contract for 52,000 a year, and 20,000 was it for name and training system, and the cost per semester is 11,250. And this bill represents a full semester of work and the name fee, plus an additional 4,000. So I wanted to know, I wanted to see the invoice, and then I wanted to know, do we normally pay for services that we haven't rendered? What is our past practice?
It depends on the vendor, but typically goes through an approval process by whoever's managing that program, and then they sign off, and then it, before it hits business services, so. It's, it's possible that, that we would for, depending on the staffing that's needed, yes.
It's not uncommon. Is that what you're saying?
It's not uncommon.
It's not uncommon to pay.
Oh, it's, it's not for, for those kinds of staffing, no.
Okay. Will they be submitting all of their documents and hours and all of that later?
There should be reporting, yes, all of the, all of the time they're spending with students, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. There should be a true-up at some point, yes.
Okay, so I would love to see the copy of the invoice that we paid this bill off of. Okay. The next is from the same warrant listing for Recode Fitness. Is Recode Fitness still a part of USI? I've heard a rumor that they're no longer doing business with us. Is that true? I, I don't know, there's so many rumors, I'm just trying to clarify.
There's lots of rumors.
That's right. So I, I think it's best to clarify.
I would have to clarify with, with the person running that program. I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. And then my question is, their monthly fee, according to the contract that we, we did was at 20,000, and there, and then we were going to pay them 20,000 for name and training system, and so I'm just curious why we're paying out so much money before, 30,000 before we've even, I mean, we just started training this week. So I'm just, again, I, I'm not sure why we're pre-paying for services that haven't been rendered.
I'd have to check with the program, honestly. So it goes through an approval process, but I can, we can check with that and get back to you.
Okay. And then...
And I would, I would also just speak into something like this, in these kinds of situations, in what I've experienced, it's not uncommon that you pay upfront for this kind of a situation for, in a consulting kind of relationship. However, there is something on the back end. If you have an issue, we'll, we go back and we get.
Yeah.
If the contract isn't fulfilled.
Because according to the contract, it states that we actually pay a monthly billing fee, so...
On the, on the contract, it states monthly billing?
Yeah, it states monthly billing.
Does it say what the amount of the monthly billing is?
It's pretty, I can't, it's, it's minimal.
Yeah.
It's not huge, so, but, but it does say monthly billing, so...
So let's get some clarification on that, for sure.
Yes, we will.
And then I'd also like confirmation that these two companies have insurance as well.
I'm sorry if that wasn't in the, in the response to your questions, but we did check every single one of those and, and identified that they do all have insurance.
And Recode Fitness, and, because that, that wasn't in with the insurance, that was in independent contractors. And I saw that. I got all those, and I crossed them off my list.
Yes. No, I, I...
But Recode Fitness was not on that list with contractors.
Okay, if you didn't ask, did you ask for the insurance on that?
I, I asked with the warrant listings that I, I sent.
Okay.
The one that somehow a lot of my questions got lost.
Okay.
And so that's why.
Okay. I, I can, I can double-check that, but I know, I do know we went through every single vendor and went through all of our files to make sure they all have insurance.
Right, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I'm going to mention that. But these were not on that list because they were part of the warrants, and they weren't in that vendor list.
Got it. I can, I can find that out, too.
Okay. So, I mean, there's a lot more that I pulled, and I really feel, one of them was Rev Robotics, but you're not going to have any information, so...
So for that one, I, I did provide, so the Rev Robotics is actually for a program, I believe it's at Esperanza, if I'm not mistaken. And it's a, it's a solar, it's about the solar system, it's a, it's a device... system, it's a it's a device that they use in science. So I can get the specific details, but I do have that detail for you.
Okay. Yeah, I have about fifteen. Let's see, we did access human potential, can I also get insurance information on them? And then University Training Center, I'm not sure where that, I've never heard of that company before, so that was a question. It's not very much money, but I'm just, it looks like it's out of the general fund. It's warrant eighty-two, and it ends in nine oh three.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
If Gary, if Mr. Stein can send all of this stuff to you later that you can ask him questions for, would that prevent us from moving forward or voting?
No.
As long as you'll.
As long as I actually get the answers.
I didn't say which way you had to vote, just so that we could.
We provided the some answers that you sent us, and then you sent me an email right before the board meeting, and we responded to that as well.
Right, those were the ones that I copied that weren't submitted the first time. And I can I can show you that email, and I'll be happy to prove that I sent this email.
We spoke about it earlier, and I saw the email right about, right as we're starting.
Yeah, but it was sent yesterday.
The one you sent me today?
That was copied, it was for, actually, if you go through it, it shows that it was forwarded from yesterday.
Okay, so the one that you sent me today, we will respond to.
Okay.
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 All right.
Thank you. So I'm going to be voting no because of what was learned at the last meeting, that we are not getting all the information in the board agenda, and that by approving these.
We're not getting all what information in the board agenda? I mean, I'm sorry, I feel like you're very much micromanaging our team that is doing a great job in all this stuff.
I just, you know, at the last meeting.
There's a difference with, yeah, go ahead.
It was brought up that many of these expenditures are not showing up on our normal approval list, that they're just putting in to the the pub, the POs and the warrants, and that we are subsequently approving these purchases because they're in the warrants. Is that correct, what you stated?
But that's how budgets work. Like, we say you spend this much money as allowed.
Yeah.
And then they spend the money.
No, but we're, a lot of these expenditures are not coming to the board first.
Right, because we don't approve every little single expenditure.
That's correct, yeah. So if we issue POs, and then the POs are presented to the board for the dollar amounts, and then those, once those are approved, we can't, we can't actually issue payments until we have approval on the POs.
Right, I get that, but we, you know, last meeting, it was brought up that we spent a over one point one million dollars on things without us knowing it.
That's not true.
What did we spend it on?
It was on a PO that was in a previous meeting.
Yes, again, it's not brought out, it's just being in a PO, and so.
In the contract, we're talking about Training Lab, in the contract for that one, it was said that it was going to be paid out over time, and then it was written as one lump sum. So I think that is the, that's the discussion.
So you're saying that you don't like the way that it was paid?
Correct, because according to the contract, it wasn't, it was supposed to be paid out over time.
Do we have a discrepancy on the contract, Gary, on Training Lab Brothers like this?
I'd have to go back and look at that contract.
And I'm also talking about like the Innovation Labs, the Gardner and Holt, that was never brought to the board for approval, and we've been paying that out for.
Anything at other locations?
Several months.
Gardner and Holt was, yes.
No, it was never brought to the board.
In October.
Not as a separate item.
Not as a separate item, and it was only for the hundred and fifty-six thousand that was brought to the board for that. So I'm just, I don't like surprises, and so, yeah, it might look like I'm micromanaging, but I'm just trying to get the answers. And if I would have had the answers that I sent yesterday, then I probably would have asked most of these questions.
Well, you wouldn't have pulled had you got the answers via email.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I feel like this has kind of been a theme, that it's like very few or very small items are being questioned, and I'm like, we gave them a budget, we said do this thing, and they go out and do it.
Right.
And we approved the POs in previous meetings, and so I don't know, I just.
And so I just would like, I just would like more transparency on expenses, and I want to know how we are spending our money.
How come you never asked for this before? This is like, this is like a new thing that you're asking, you've never asked it like this in the past.
Before, it always came to the board and the agenda.
Not everything.
No, it did not.
There are POs that went through consent all the time.
And so not on large expenses.
That's not true.
But we still had the opportunity to ask questions about it and get the background.
But there was just no questions asked.
Well, there was an email that was lost. I mean, I get, however that happened.
And I think Mr. Stein can say I've asked a lot of questions about.
I don't doubt that, absolutely. I don't doubt that.
So just to reiterate, you sent an email today, but you sent it yesterday, we responded, you you responded to that response with the email today, and I clearly stated that we will respond to the questions asked.
I appreciate that, and that I'd be happy to vote.
Okay.
But I don't have information, so it's really hard to vote.
Okay, then let's go ahead and call for the vote, then. I'm ready to vote, is everyone else ready to vote? All right, Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
No.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Ms. Frazier.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries four-two-one. Nineteen point three, please, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept or complete the projects listed in authorized notice, filing notice of completion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, I have a second by Mr. Frazier. Go ahead, nineteen point three?
Nineteen point three.
Who pulled this?
I pulled this, and I pulled it just to recognize all of the hard work that was done over the summer. The HVAC units, roofs on different buildings, and at various sites around the district, including Mabel Payne, Kramer, Glen Knoll, Fairmont, there was a ton of work done, and if you just drive around the schools and look, you can, you can see so much of the work that went in. So I just wanted to pull it to say thank you all for the hard work that was done over the summer, and it really made a difference for the kids.
Absolutely.
And I will say, too, that the new HVAC systems, like El Dorado, the parents told me in Esperanza, they were saying that the gym is finally cool during the summertime, especially in this delicious heat.
I had one kid that played volleyball at Valencia and one at at El Dorado, and they were both in the gyms without the AC, and it was miserable. So it is, it is very nice.
Yes. So thank you. Are we ready to vote?
No, I have some comments.
A question.
About nineteen point three?
Yep.
Okay.
I I appreciate all hard work, and I asked for DSA certifications for on a lot of those things. I noticed that for the OCSCS and Valencia, they stated that we did not need DSA approval for those projects, and that concerns me a little bit because USI was shut down at Casa Loma because it did need DSA approval.
Because of previous construction not to do with the current.
Because of the lack of fire extinguishers, of fire sprinklers put in.
Again, we're going back to DSA is for access, fire, and things like that, and it needs, it's supposed to be looked at, and we did remodel rooms and things like that, and so.
Remodel rooms where?
At OC.
Where?
It says remodeled multipurpose rooms, rooms one oh two and one oh three, kitchen and office.
That could mean several different things.
It could mean lots of things, but.
Which 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 campus are you talking about?
Orange County School of Computer Science.
Okay, so you're not talking about the Casa Loma PDA?
No, she mentioned Valencia.
And I mentioned Valencia.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence, that we're getting exemption letters for things like that, because, again, all of us board members were held personally liable, and if we are constructing without DSA approval, we're just taking money away from students.
There's a form, I think it's Form seven hundred or something like that.
And I think it is.
And it was around five hundred dollars.
It's really cheap.
If you submit it, they'll give you a waiver saying that this project is completely exempt from having us and, or from having us come and look at it. When you replace flooring in in locations, if it's not replaced with like, if we took carpet out here, and we would have to replace it with carpet.
Yeah.
If it was something else, they would have to come out. So it's it's a request just to get DSA information and to ensure that we're doing the correct thing. You know, I'm all for making sure that we're doing things correctly, and if we don't need approval, then getting a small waiver just to ease our mind and and get that taken care of would be something I would appreciate.
I would be interested what the threshold, then, in your opinion, is to get DSA approval or a waiver.
Well, that would be whatever DSA says, so what, if it's a project that we're submitting and it's over a certain dollar amount, they have requirements, but if, so, as long as somebody is calling and saying, do we need to get a waiver, do we need to get approval on this, that's, I just want to make sure that's happening.
So an email would suffice to that as well.
Oh, yeah, an email, as long as it's.
Yeah, I think the threshold is about two hundred thousand, but it's worth a phone call, and it's worth, it's definitely worth, if we're spending over two hundred thousand dollars on a project, five hundred dollars seems like a very low cost.
To make sure that we are.
Are we already making these phone calls, though, would be the question? Wouldn't these phone calls already be made? Because they did make the phone call to DSA, and they thought the Casa Loma address had fire sprinklers in it already.
DSA did. They assumed because of the prior.
DSA thought because of the prior regulations in two thousand thirteen, they said you cannot use this building unless there's fire sprinklers installed. So they were already under the assumption at first with that project that there were fire sprinklers already put in. That's why they didn't think, that's why we didn't think we needed the approval. It wasn't until they actually started to research more into the project because of all the phone calls, they realized in two thousand thirteen, the fire sprinklers were never put in. So I'm just saying is with, so are we with all these projects, like the Valencia Kitchen and all these things, are we already making those phone calls, because we have attorneys that are doing this?
My lights aren't turning on.
It's on, you're on.
So I just want to be clear, Valencia Kitchen hasn't started yet, so let's, so the Valencia one, it was the wood shop lab that, or the the classroom that that was remodeled using a partnership with ROP. So that one, it was a, it was all cosmetic. Cosmetic things are not under the the DSA purview. And so in a lot of the rooms that we're talking about with remodeling, it was paint, and it was that kind of thing. I understand flooring, we've we've did call and talk to people about that, but we didn't go for the formal letter. So that's, I understand what you're saying, and I'll bring that up with the team.
Do we have a documentation procedure with those kinds of things?
Good question, yeah.
For for those calls?
For a phone caller and email, so we, so we either need a form, we don't?
Typically, no, no, because there's, when you have staff who've worked with DSA for a lot of years, they have friendships and and they they're able to just make those informal calls. We can formalize that, but.
I think that would be, that would be definitely best.
It's not a bad idea, yeah.
Even if it's just an email, so that we have something, and Ryan says, yeah, you're good.
Yeah, hundred percent. I agree.
Was there more questions on that one?
Nineteen, nineteen point three, ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries five to zero. Next is twenty point two.
Does that mean, okay, I make a motion that we present the final local control accountability plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, I have a second by Mr. Youngblood.
I only pulled this because this is an important document that we have to approve every year, and this is the final one, so just to call that out and recognize that, you know, we are submitting it now and approving this final plan.
All right, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, twenty point four, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the independent contract agreement with stage light performing arts at Glen Knoll and Sierra Vista expanded learning programs for the September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four through December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Frazier.
Okay, I pulled this because, again, there's been a lot of questions about insurance going on and making sure that we have it, and then, and we've even had public records requests regarding insurance for after-school things, so I just wanted to verify with staff that we have these, and and so they answered a lot of questions and made sure that we had insurance and on many things. Do you want to explain what's special about this one, why I pulled it? Gary, or I don't know who answered this question.
I'll go ahead, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay, well, it says that they they had insurance through August. That's the answer I got on back on the stage light performance, and.
Yes.
And I just, and it said that we'll make sure that they have insurance, so I just want every, to calm everyone's fears.
Yes, please.
Making sure that we are doing our due diligence and that we are having, making sure that these companies are in good standing, and and that's why I pulled it.
Yes, and this vendor is a, somebody we've used for a while.
A long time.
And I would assume that we have a procedure in place to document certification of insurance for all of the vendors that we.
Well, yes, and what what happened when I went to, oh, ask, they act like they thought I was crazy for asking, what do you mean, we don't have insurance? Of course, and they chase everybody down for insurance.
Right, because I know that that it is something that is very specifically brought up when a new vendor comes in, that we need to see insurance, we need to have all of these Ts crossed and Is dotted before we let you be a part of anything of the district.
I have many conversations every week about insurance and making sure vendors have insurance, yes.
Yes, good. I I trust that you guys are doing a good job.
Yeah, I really do, you guys are doing a great job. Thank you. Are we ready for a vote, or is there more questions?
I just trying to dispel rumors.
Yeah, there's too many of those lately.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, twenty point one-eight, please.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Trackman B-one practice system for baseball and softball training for the Yorbalinda High School. This is a one-time hardware purchase with an annual software renewal fee.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I have a second by Mr. Youngblood.
Is your question, when can we get in the cage and hit off this thing?
No, that's really not my thing. No, I just wanted to bring this up because it was only for Yorbalinda High School, of a cost of twenty-five thousand, and I got a great answer if someone wanted to answer that, or if you would like me to repeat what you put in the memo, I'll be happy to do that.
Sure, I was really hoping not to speak today with all my congestion, however, yes, Yorbalinda High School baseball program has asked to bring forward this contract. Any other coaches who would like to bring forward contracts for software or similar programs for their schools are very welcome to do so. It will serve the students at Yorbalinda High School and the baseball and softball programs, as well as any other students who may use that facility.
And this is, this was initiated by the coach there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's something that we should make coaches aware, that they can do that.
Or maybe they should go through their site and their AD first.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, the ADs need to be aware and tell their coaches, like, I'm not just saying, hey, coaches, just email us with all your ideas, this is great. What I mean is, let's make sure that our sites are aware that they can do this kind of stuff, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
And when can I go hit on this machine?
I know, that's super cool. And they do the pitching thing, too.
Dang it, is it on, Gary, am I on file?
Very good, Olivia, I love it.
Dang it, shoot, touche.
Good job.
So I will say that there's been a lot of talk, and there's a lot of things, you know, going around about what is the district supposed to pay, and then like, what are the sports programs needing to pay? And so I've been telling everybody to go through your athletic director and the principal because there's things that boosters are being forced to pay for that the district's actually supposed to be paying for, so just go for it. I've been telling all the booster programs, just send it through your athletic director, and then the worst thing it can do is get denied, but the boosters have been having to pay way too much, you know, for equipment and for just all this stuff. So we are, we are making sure that, you know, the parents aren't paying fees and then paying for scoreboards and, you know.
I'd like to also add PTA to that, so if PTAs are finding these great programs out there that they would be interested in bringing, that that's a discussion they should have with their site principal, too.
Absolutely.
Because I keep seeing programs on the gift list, you know, that.
Oh, for PTA, yeah, yeah.
For PTAs been paying without getting into.
Yes.
An agenda item.
Yeah, no, absolutely, go, let's go through our sites and bring it, bring it to the top.
All right, so let's call for the vote on this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries five zero, twenty-two point one, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the classified human resources report. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the classified human resources report.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Youngblood.
Okay, I pulled this because I wanted to talk about our special education assistance and about how many were short. And I noticed, you know, that we lost 12 and only one was hired this last month. And we have two and a half pages of substitute special ed assistance in there. And so my question is basically, how, what are we, what are the proactive things we are doing to get more special ed assistance? And then if anybody out there is looking for a position, we have full-time and part-time positions available.
Absolutely, thank you so much for that question. Like I said earlier, or actually in closed session, that we have a great partnership with CSEA. And we recently reclassified the instructional assistance category of employees. And with that reclassification, we also increased wages. And so as of the time we did the research, we were reclassifying the wage increase. Put our instructional assistants as one of the highest paid in Orange County. So that was a, that was a great deal and that was supported by you as board members, so we really appreciate that. Additionally, we've been looking at our vacancies, positions that are have been vacant for quite some time, closing those positions, particularly the part-time positions and making more full-time positions. The full-time positions come with benefits. We know that a lot of our employees are looking for benefits here, we have great benefits. And so we have a great team in our HR department who who put on and hold and host the job fairs where quite frankly, we we get a lot of our candidates from. And so partnering with our special education department and Renee Gray and her team, we do a great job of identifying new candidates and onboarding them fairly quickly. Additionally, one of the newest incentives that we have is that for our instructional assistants, we reimburse their fingerprints. And it may seem like a small piece, a small kind of measure, but fingerprints are costly, right? So you pay $80 for fingerprints, but since we now remove that, we noticed that that folks are applying more. And so with all of those measures, we noticed that our retention rate has increased. And so we don't have as much turnover, which allows us to not only keep retain our instructional assistants that we're close, most closest with our most needed population, but it's also cost saving, so we don't have to continue to retrain. So we're doing quite a bit, we know that we can always do more and we will continue to do more things for the question.
Where can people find a job listing if they are interested?
We keep a job listing on our website, so the humans resource department has a has a link there for anyone who's interested.
I used to be one, it's an awesome job, you should do it.
All right.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries five zero. Now we go to communication and board report, Mrs. Buck.
All right, I just have a couple of things. At the North Orange County Board meeting, North Orange County ROP, it was the day after our board meeting last time and tomorrow it will be again. But at our last meeting, Superintendent Dana Lynch told us that the California Department of Ed has paused the Golden State Pathway Grant. And on September 20th, they're going to be announcing again what those reallocations are. They had some incorrect calculations that they did, they paused the whole grant and it will be coming out again. So we'll find out if we're still going to be receiving funds and how much that might be. So if you always, when you find out, if you could let us know, that would be great to know. Let's see, I have a staff request. It's come to my attention that we received a request from Magnolia Science Academy Charter School, a Prop 39 request for vac or for locations next year in our facilities. In Jan or in January, they said, excuse me, let me go back. According to Magnolia Science Academy, they initially had contacted our district in October by mail. In January, they submitted a petition to the Orange County Board of Ed requesting approval to operate in our school district and three other school districts. In March, they went before the Orange County Board of Ed and presented at their hearing. And then in May, they went back for their final vote and that vote was passed with five zero vote. PYLUSD was not there to comment, they weren't in attendance and I didn't even know that this had happened until most recently. I went and looked at Orange County Board of Ed and their minutes and their agenda. The link was dead to the Magnolia Science Academy Charter School information. I called them and asked them, I told them it was dead, I wanted to look it up. And they told me I needed to file a public records request. So I'm asking the staff to find out what all of that information is, what was submitted to Orange County Board of Ed, what the curriculum is, what the project is, all of that, and send that to the board so we can do some research on it and read about it. According to their petition, they will be planning for this school year, 2024, 25, and plan to open in PYLUSD 25, 26. Prop 39 request is when they come in and they actually ask for space. There's some requirements around number of students they have to have, I'm interested in where they are in that process. Additionally, there has been some controversy over this particular charter school in LA. It's affiliated with a number of charter schools around the country. And so I would like some more information on that too, as well as any letters and things that we've received as a school district. I would have liked to know in this, back in October, January, March or May, so that I could at least have researched or learned about it.
Carrie, can we just ask a question? Wouldn't we have to, if they were petitioning to be in our school district, they would have had to come to us like the CRLA did and give us a presentation?
I don't know if we can actually have that discussion because it's not agendized. So I'm asking if the staff will just give us every bit of information that we can possibly get. And that's, oh, last, we're now into our third week of school. Welcome back to school, everybody. It's it's amazing to drive around and to see all of the kids going, coming and going at pick up and drop off. I love seeing all of the social media that you're doing out there, Lauralee, it looks great, the kids look happy. It's at every school site, they have really great intros and things that they're doing. So I love to see that. To all of you out there, just the best school year that you can have. It looks beautiful, the kids look happy, I hope that you all have a wonderful year and we're here to support you and make sure that it's another successful year. That's it for me.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to get information about the library access for the students at Orange County Computer Science School. I've heard a lot of comment about this and people contacted me about the concern for these students not having a library. Also, I would like to put on the agenda for next month, Prop 28, plan for discussion. It needs to be kind of a top priority so that we don't lose out on state funding. And Magnolia Science Academy, they are actively recruiting and flyers are everywhere. So and I just found out about this on Friday from our board update. And I echo everything Carrie asked for, I like all that information and given to us. And if we could even maybe even have a study session on that would be great. Also, I would like us to look into getting shade for the students at Rio Vista. I heard from several parents that kids went there this summer for summer school and the playground equipment was so hot the kids couldn't play on it. So I'd like us to look into doing that. And also, I would like to agendaize this joining, putting back on the agenda CSBA. It's been a year since we decided not to join them and I think we should relook at that. From all reports, look and pictures that I've seen, thank you Lauralee, it looks like the first day of school was an amazing success and it's so fun to see our kids back on their educational journey. And many thanks to everybody for making the first day of school memorable and the positive start to the school year. I attended summer graduation with Mrs. Buck and it was so great to see our students who pressed forward. And what a great example they are of perseverance. Also, I attended the Family Resource Center Back to School Giveaway for the McKinney Vento students and it was great to see the families there. They were so excited to be there and great and I'm grateful for the school supplies and backpacks and jackets and sweatshirts. And I'm so grateful for our faithful volunteers. There are so many dedicated volunteers that are there all the time serving there and I'm just grateful for them and supporting our students and families. And I did learn while I was there, I just got to talk to the Family Health Matters and they talked about how they are opening up a clinic at Melrose. And this Friday is the grand opening for the Family Resource Center and the Family Health Matters at at Melrose at 9:00 AM. And I am so excited. Mrs. Buck and I have been advocating for this for the La Jolla families for many years and we keep putting it on the LCAP and it's finally come to fruition. And I am just so personally thankful to everyone who has played a part in making this vision a reality. I know something like this just doesn't happen overnight, it takes hard work and dedication of many people. And I truly appreciate the entire team for bringing this to the La Jolla community in Placentia. I also attended back to school nights at Ruby Drive, Melrose and a very hot night at Rio Vista. And it was great to see all the excitement for the new year and I love the energy of the staff and all the families. I think that's, I love this time of year. Also, I wanted to discuss the USI budget and I'd like to thank Dr. Turnus for sending out the USI budget and information about USI, Parkview, Buena Vista and El Camino. Mrs. Blades posted some of the information on social media and so I want to highlight some of the specific details. Cost of a USI per athlete based on 150 athletes is $8,233.33. The cost of educating a student at Parkview based on enrollment of 183 students is 10,163 students.
Is this on the agenda?
No, I just.
Talking about budgets?
As long as we don't, I can make comments, we just can't have a conversation about it. The total cost for Parkview students who are participating in USI is $18,396.33. These numbers have to be added together because USI is a program at Parkview. They are Parkview students who are participating in the USI program. USI does not collect ADA, only the school, Parkview generates ADA per student. Based on Dr. Turnus's email, the revenue per student enrolled in Parkview is $12,366. For every $12,366, the district collects from ADA, $1,937.63 is set aside to fund district administrative costs and special education. In reality, the max amount each student receives per student is, each school receives per student is approximately $10,428.27. There are variances on the amount the district receives per students based on their grade level. Cost over ADA for a Parkview student participating in USI exceeds the ADA received by $7,968.6 based on the 150 participants Dr. Turnus shared with the board.
I think this is violating board policy with what you're doing, this is a Brown Act violation.
But you can post this all over social media.
I'm not talking about in a board meeting, this is not on an agenda, I can post facts given by the district.
She can talk about it as long as we're not having a discussion about it.
Yeah, we're not discussing it.
This is not agenda, it's a budget for USI and OCSCS is not, is not a budget.
This is my research and I am going to finish sharing my costs. The cost using these numbers that encroach annually on the general fund is $1,195,209. So.
So if you're wrong, will you take this back and apologize at the next meeting?
I would like to know.
For misleading the community, will you?
Mrs. Porter, I am speaking, this is my board report.
And you are violating a board policy.
No, because we're not having a discussion. So I would like to know how many students are currently participating in USI. I know that Parkview has a total enrollment of 240 students as of September 3rd, 208 from grades three through 12. So even with this budget is helpful, the amount, number of students does not seem to be accurate. My hope is we can get an accurate accounting for both Buena Vista, Parkview and El Camino schools. Lastly, USI is a program, not a school. My concern is that this program is encroaching 1.1 million, 195,209 dollars on the general fund. My question is, how do we intend to fund the 1,195,209 annual encroachment? And then lastly, I would like to address a concern regarding the lack of equality, equal opportunity in sharing information. As a board member, we should all be receiving the same information and opportunities to participate in district-related events. However, that hasn't been my experience. For instance, I was made aware of Orange County School of Computer Science event through social media, not through official channels. I had no knowledge of the USI event at all. To add this, to add to this, I was advised not to attend the Orange County School of Computer Science event after the district, after I told the district of my intentions to attend, despite having voted in favor of the charter school. Let's be clear, the only time I did not support Orange County School of Computer Science related expenses was when funds were diverted from other programs to cover their cost. I do not believe in making one program successful at the expense of others. All students deserve equal access to successful programs. What concerns me most is that by not giving me information and minimizing questions, concerns and comments, you are not just affecting me, you are disenfranchising the constituents I represent. Their voices and perspectives matter just as much as any other trustee. I'm simply asking for better communication, equal treatment and respect for the role each of us play on the board. It is responsibility of the executive cabinet, superintendent and president of the board to ensure that all board members are treated equally and kept fully informed. We must be united in our mission to serve all students and this begins with transparent communication. Thank you.
I, would you like to reveal why you couldn't go to OCSCS? Do you want to reveal that and and be transparent with the community?
That would be getting into discussion.
Oh, okay, well, then we need to be transparent, maybe she should reveal it. Go on, Mr. Youngblood.
Okay, wow, that was fun. All right, so welcome back, everyone. Aside from all the political grandstanding that's that's going on tonight, I hope you've learned a lot. I know I definitely have. I do want to welcome all our staff and students back. I can tell you that it is quite a sight to see all the the kids that are going back and forth through the schools. I do have to make one, one notification observation. The Eldorado, my gosh, the the gauntlet was absolutely packed. There were lines of kids everywhere and I'm seeing traffic going about the same rate of speed when those kids are walking by as they would normally if there was a a summer school with, you know, no kids. So please, parents, slow down. That's the last thing we need is a child to get hit, you know, some accident to happen and just be careful out there. These, these kids are not looking, they are not looking for us, the drivers, they're on their phones, they're talking to their friends. So please, just be safe out there. I do also want to say that we are in the process of trying to get more of the Narcan out to the the schools. I totally agree with Ms. DeHaven, it's, it's super important. And I would feel more comfortable once we do have all of those kits available. So we are in process, we're really working hard to try to get that out. Unfortunately, we're not the only district that is asking for these things. And it does take a little bit to to get those made and shipped out, but we are trying. But we are trying our best to get those in all classrooms. Okay, aside from the nice visitors that I had at my last board meeting that I tried to do my best to make sure I was involved with. It has been, I would say, uneventful for me in the district. It has been very eventful for me in the world of wildland. So please, you know, be aware of the fires that are going on around you. Just know that it is going to cause poor air quality. If it is an issue that the district finds that is kind of taken over, we will be doing something about that. And that may end up being, you know, early closure of a school for that day or something of that nature. Because we want to be able to, you know, at least keep our kids somewhat safe with the air quality. But a lot of times that's difficult to do. Let's see, lastly, let's go with, tomorrow is a very solemn time for me especially. But tonight, you know, as you think about going home, dealing with your family, you know, just know that tomorrow is not a guarantee for any of us. And for over 3,000 people, this was the last night for them to be in their homes, in their beds, with their families. And their world changed tomorrow or the next day. And it affected families to even this day. So please, you know, take time without any of the static that you're going to have with other people that may have a different view than you or may support a different candidate than you. Just know that we are still all one race. We are the human race. So be nice to each other, okay? Thank you. That's all I got.
The fall season is upon us. School has started. And my favorite time of the year, it's football season. I haven't, unfortunately, been able to get to every high school yet. I've only been to three of the four, so hope to visit the Hawks' Nest coming up soon. But Esperanza, Valencia, and Yorba Linda have all had some fantastic games. People in attendance and I love watching the student sections. I think, I mentioned the Hawks' Nest because they're the most iconic in the district. I apologize to all the other schools, but it's true. But seeing the students, school's getting started, they're getting back to being with their friends, and they're just having a good time cheering on their school. And there's a sense of school spirit that you get going to sporting events specifically that I like to see, that you just don't see anywhere else. A sense of unity of students that probably don't hang out with each other as much during the week. They're all doing pushups on a board held by a bunch of different other people and running flags across the end zones. And it's just a lot of fun and it's really cool to see our students get to experience these kind of events together and really just celebrate their schools. I think that's something that's really exciting about sports in general, but football season, it just brings that out and it's been a lot of fun. I did happen to kind of stumble onto the USI opening event. I wasn't aware of it either until, I think, day of. And so it was neat to see the facility and see all the parents and the students there. Here's from the coaches, here from the Olympic wrestler that is part of our team over there. So the, looking at what's possible for the students in this district, whether they're directly a part of USI, or the thing I like to think about is we have an asset now that can be utilized by all schools, all sports programs. We don't know exactly how yet, so let's hold our horses just a second. But we have an opportunity to advance and give these students opportunities that they would not otherwise get. And this district is setting, I think, a precedent for several other districts in that space and the computer science space and in other ways. I just am really excited to see what's going to come of all this. I also do want to address, just briefly, I'm not going to go into any extrapolations off of a single slide somewhere and give you dollar amounts of things that happen to be probably funny math from somewhere. But I do think it's important to highlight the grants that we've received for capital expenditures that are not the same as ongoing expenditures for something like USI that are not recurring every year. And I think I would like to make sure that if you hear something that sounds a little off, maybe go ask a question to somebody that has an answer, as opposed to looking online for somebody that's got an axe to grind. Because I think it's been interesting hearing rumors, seeing rumors, getting phone calls, emails, and texts about, hey, I heard there was some of the craziest things. I won't repeat them and bore you now. But it just doesn't seem reasonable and people are running with it. So let's be reasonable. As Sean said, let's be good to each other. We're all in this for the students, remember that? And I personally am really excited to see what's going to happen this year and beyond at PYLUSD. So that's all I have.
Mr. Frazier, the bell game is Friday night.
I have to be in Dana Hills, though. I know. I wish I could be at the bell game.
For those of you that don't know, go to the bell game Friday night.
Who's the home team this year? Eldorado's the home team? Eldorado-V Valencia at Bradford. It's a good time.
I might confess that I did see the head football coach of Eldorado at the Esperanza-V Valencia game scouting Valencia. So they're going to be well-prepared. I just threw him under the bus. So before we go on with my board report, I just, you know, I was just kind of accused of not allowing a board member, you know, access to information. But I think what's fair here is there a reason why a board member cannot go to OCSCS. And so I think if that's brought up, you should be honest with them as to why you can't go to OCSCS, instead of saying that we're just not giving you information because you had the information, but there's a certain reason that you're not allowed to go there at this time. And so we need to be transparent with the community about this, and I'm not going to go into anything further. I also love football, but I also love water polo. So I've been to two of our Esperanza football games. I've been to a Valencia football game and I've also been to a Yorba Linda high school football game. The first two football games by Esperanza and Yorba Linda, it was like coming from behind excitement. It was a great game, like seconds left. It was great. Obviously, I've seen a lot of Yorba Linda water polo games. I attended the Orange County School of Computer Science chain cutting, and that was awesome. And we had a crowd like you wouldn't believe. I mean, obviously, it was a back-to-school night. But we had, the fire department was there. They had a big flag, you know, raised. We had Garner Holt. He cut the chain with us. It was a really, really cool event. I was just really proud of the staff and all the teachers and everybody there and all the parents. And it was one of the things that I made a comment was, you know, thank you for trusting us. You know, we brought you something new, brought you something innovative, and you trusted us. And look at our enrollments, up a couple hundred students over at the Computer Science School. And I think that that's very telling. And from what I'm hearing from the parents is they're very excited and the kids are coming home. And I think too, if you email, there's not a normal grading system over there. They do things a little bit differently. And so it's a very interesting grading system. I talked in depth with it about, you know, to Phil Seitz when I was there. He was talking about the changes, you know, I asked, like, what are the changes in the classroom from this school to the next? And so if you have any questions, I would say, email Beth Fisher and ask her about the grading system and what's that, you know, how it's supposed to be helpful to the kids', you know, confidence. And it's just a very exciting, and it's different. And I can't wait to see what the outcome is. I went to the USI, the Parents' Day, and was able to see Helen Marolis, who is an Olympian, a wrestler, and her message is just fabulous. I mean, what an amazing, she's a gold medalist, she had the bronze, but she gave a lot of, you know, her personal experiences. And we had a lot, a lot of athletes in that room. It was standing room only. You didn't even get a seat. And it was just a phenomenal event. And you could see the excitement. They answered a lot of questions. And then they took everybody back into the rooms for like the next hour, and they gave presentations. And everybody was just blown away. What a lot of people were blown away about also is that we're going to have our Venture students and also some of our Special Education students that are also going to be able to utilize the USI, you know, for training, you know, and for just exercise purposes. OCSCS is going to be able to come over and actually use that for some of their PE periods. And then they're also talking to, and don't hold me to this, but as they've been looking at the schedule, they've been talking about opening it up to our high school athletes possibly from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. in the morning and then having an afternoon session. But obviously, that's going to be, you know, a little bit further down the road as they open and as they get established. Yesterday, I had an interview at Eldorado about where I was on 9/11. And so that was a cool interview. The students were super excited. And, you know, they asked a lot of good questions and that was just a fun afternoon. I'm excited to be attending the Melrose Family Resource Center, which is opening on Friday. And I think that after all these years, as you guys said, all these years that you've requested it, I'm so glad that Dr. Ternus was the person who opened this. There's been some, you know, social media events happening. And we had, I guess, a retired principal or teacher from our district who did an interview. And it was an interesting interview. And I confirmed with Mrs. Young that, you know, we do still have suspensions in place in PYL, which he stated we did not. We do not hate myself and Sean Youngblood and Todd Frazier. We do not hate parents and kids. And we are not extremists. And I really want to apologize to you and to Dr. Ternus for the use in this community of the word carpetbagger, which is a racist term. And so I'd like to apologize, even though it's not us who's saying it, but the people in the community who are loosely using this word and the social media sites that are putting this out there in the universe when you have these type of slurs. I think it's disgraceful. There was also mentioned in this interview that the teachers we are receiving are at the bottom of the list, at the bottom of the barrel, and our administrators are not ready to lead. That is absolutely false and it's disgusting to say that. We do not have teachers at the bottom of the list or the bottom of the barrel. Just those 93 teachers that we just welcomed in, how many do you think Olivia had more than 15 or 28 years of service? Wasn't there 15 of them who stood up that had come from other districts at the 93? Right, yeah. So we have, we're not getting, you know, with the multiple years of service that we can, you know, attract teachers over, we're not getting bottom of the barrel or bottom of the list. And to say that to a community and to talk about our teachers and our staff, I was absolutely disgusted. And I can't believe that somebody would go out and just say this and then they would publish that. Because that was, we don't have teachers that are bottom of the list, bottom of the barrel. And our administrators are all ready to lead, no matter where you come from, no matter how much time you've done in our district. They are ready to lead. And I cannot believe that people are promoting this on their websites or their social media platforms, this type of behavior. There was also some false statements that were also made that we have never had APs that have come over from other districts and have assumed the principal position here, which was false. Beth Fisher came over as an, she was an AP in Garden Grove. She came over and was, you know, as a principal. She didn't have any AP experience here. Jeff Giles was an AP in Downey, and he came over here and started as a principal. And also to our Loanne, and I always butcher her last name and make her appear Dutch, and she's not Dutch, but Loanne Struksma. She, thank you. She was an AP in Garden Grove, and so now she's assumed the role as principal. So to even question that she isn't ready to lead or people that are coming over from other districts as APs and assuming the roles as principals, that was, I don't think that, it wasn't a true statement. Obviously, we've been doing this for the past few years. And I also think that to go out and to make the Esperanza community think that their principal is not experienced and not capable of doing the job is also disgusting. And so I know, I've spoken with her, you know, at the football games. We've spoken quite often about what her goals is for Esperanza. And I can tell this entire community that she is ready to lead and she is ready to transform that school. And, you know, as they kept saying, Esperanza means hope. And so that is their message over there, that there's hope, and they want to bring Esperanza back to all its glory. So I just want to give a shout out to Loanne that we're behind you and we believe in you. And we don't want any of these naysayers to be saying anything that would make any type of confidence, you know, any type of our community to lack any type of confidence in her ability. Because we hired her. We have a great team that hired her. And to say anything else is just not right. In the interview too, they were trying to allude that Rick Lopez was fired or he ran out. Rick Lopez resigned to go to Claremont when we were under Superintendent Mike Matthews. And so that's not true. The Magnolia Charter School, from what my understanding was about this, is that you have to come before our board, like the CRLA did, and like even our own district charter. And you have to petition for space inside our campus. And so it's my understanding is that, not sure if they prop 39'd us yet, but it's my understanding is that they were given approval by the OC Board of Education to be in Yorba Linda or Placentia, but not necessarily under our board. That's my understanding of this whole situation, but if we can clarify that. The USI claims, just in case anybody, this came up because, you know, obviously, people are talking about the insurance. The Training Lab is officially licensed to do business in the city of Placentia as of last week. The Training Lab is in compliance with all fire and building codes. The Training Lab signs are 100% permitted. The Training Lab is in compliance and good standing with all state agencies, including the Secretary of State of California and the Franchise Tax Board. And the Training Lab is in compliance with the IRS. There was phone calls going out in our community that the OCSCS and USI were not insured. And in case there was a school shooting, that nobody would be able to file claims. I don't know why we would focus on a school shooting right after we have a school shooting happening and why we'd be focusing on claims and insurance. But I can assure you, all of our schools and everything is insured. There was another rumor that went out that we were going to get rid of AP classes. Dr. Ternus, that was on his list, which was quite, you know, that was another doozy. And so there's no intention of getting rid of any AP classes. And people have been asking about the cab bonds. Apparently, in 2035, if I have it correct, we took out a loan before and it was for $28 million and the payback is $282 million. And the cab bonds are now deemed illegal. So you're right, our property taxes in 2035 due to the bond will go up. And it'll be the taxpayers that are paying it off of our property tax, if I'm not mistaken. And it won't be the school district that has to pay the bond. Can we get some clarification on that? Because there's also rumors that the bond is going to bankrupt our school district. So I think if we can just figure out what the cab bond is, what the payout's like, if it's going to increase property taxes, what it's going to do, I think we could put some of these rumors to rest. And I think that's it. Super excited about the, I have a drive, my youngest drives now. So I, first time ever, I didn't take a kid to school on the first day. He did let me take his picture, so that was a good thing. And I'm just, I'm really excited. I'm glad that, you know, we kind of took off. And I'm so glad that USI opened on time and that our Orange County School of Computer Science, you know, that started on time. And then now that I've mentioned Orange County School of Computer Science, I also wanted to let everybody know that there is a library at the Orange County School of Computer Science. It is just a different concept. What they've actually done, and I've seen it, is it's in a big hallway. They've transformed one of their hallways, or maybe a couple of their hallways. And there's books that are just out. And so you can check out your book on your own, you know, if you're walking by on a break or if you are on lunch and you want to go pull out a book, you can pull out a book. It's just a different way. It's an open concept library. So it's not, you know, a standard library that we're all used to, but is it more of an open concept library? So there is a library at OCSCS. It is just different. So yes, so I'm super excited about the beginning of school year. I'm happy to see, you know, all the kids that went back. It's always exciting. And I'm just happy to see what the month of September has in store for all of us. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Our meeting is adjourned at 8:29 p.m.
You need to take a vote.
Okay, vote.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.
Everyone begin? All those in, the vote's 5-0, the next meeting will be October 8th.